Welcome to the Wareham Board of Selectmen's meeting for July 21st, 2020. We opened the meeting at 6:30 and went into executive session for reason number three under the generalized Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. We came out of executive session about seven or eight minutes ago, and we were waiting for WCTV to get some new equipment up and going, and now we're back live. Can we have another roll call, please?
All selectmen are present, as is Ms. Allen England, acting town administrator and town council.
Okay, pledge of allegiance. Chloe, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements. Allen, any announcements?
The only one really is the YMCA, of course, is back open again. You're allowed to work out at the Y, but if you're working out and you take your mask off, because it's pretty difficult to work with it on, the separation is 14 feet, not six, which makes, when I was there today, I've been there every day, the main floor of the gym and the workout area normally has 15 to 20 people minimum. They're lucky if they can get six people in there. So you need to make your reservations and plan that it's not going to be that easy to hit the equipment that you want to do. So that also, it doesn't include outside, but outside rules still mean that in youth events, et cetera, you still have to wear a mask, even if you stay six feet apart. The state has not changed the rules at all there.
Okay. Patrick.
Okay, so, you know, I know we've had a lot of trouble with COVID, and I hate to bring this to you, too, but just so you know, it's summertime, and mosquitoes have tested positive for triple E in Carver, which is just right next door to us. I know they've been doing some spraying, that's important, but it's important for everybody to try to stay out of mosquito peak times, which is early morning and late dusk kind of times. Make sure you're wearing bug spray when you go outside. You know, if you want to take how serious it is, triple E kills 50% of the people, and about 25% of them are, have disability of one kind or another as a result, and COVID is much smaller, so, much, much, much smaller. So let's take it seriously. I know I hate to put another thing on everybody, it's been a real tough time, but, you know, hey, we got to protect each other and take care of everybody, that's all we can do.
Just as a sidebar, Mr. Hiller from the Hiller family in Rochester, last year, basically had triple E, he was on TV today, actually, just before I got here, and if you were to see the man who was younger than me by about, I think, 10 years, you would swear he was 80, 85. The brain damage that that particular disease did is unbelievable.
Yeah, it's pretty sad.
He can barely walk, he can't drive anymore, and unfortunately, the West Wareham Rochester Carver is the height of the area, and we're at the height of the season as well. So it's not, it's not something that's funny or anything else, it's extremely serious, and all it takes is one bite, so please be careful.
You know, just so you know, remove any standing water you have outside, folks. That means, you know, you can't have a bucket out there that's standing with water in it, that's bad. If you have a little, like, fish pond on your property or something like that, that's also bad. Things like that are where mosquitoes breed, and that's a bad situation. Try, you know, you can get your own property sprayed, too, folks, if you want to. There are companies around, you can call, and they'll come and spray your property, and I'm telling you, take it serious, because this is way more deadly than COVID ever was.
How's that, how's that affect the outdoor dining?
The spraying?
No, I mean, with the triple E threat.
It's a risk. It's a threat, it's definitely a threat.
Absolutely a threat, and, you know, one of the things that we should probably get word out to the restaurants to have bug spray available for their patrons, I think that'd be a good, good message to get out to them.
Either that or just after dusk.
Yeah.
Indoors, I mean, if it's a health issue.
Yep. Well, the Board of Health will weigh in on that, but regarding, you know, one of the things I do, because it's easy to walk out the door and forget to put the bug spray on, and until you look down, you see one's, you know, filling himself up on your arm, is to hang a stop and shop bag or something with the bug spray in it right on a door handle when you're going outside, and then you'll see it, you'll, you'll know it's there, and you'll spray. That's what I've started doing that again, I did it last year.
I have some good news, I should say some good news about it. So I didn't know this, and I, it's kind of interesting to know. Did you know that there were mammal-biting mosquitoes and other mosquitoes that don't bite mammals at all? A huge difference between the two. So the ones you have to look out for are the ones that are mammal-biting. Fortunately, when you take mosquitoes as a whole, there's a whole lot of them that aren't, so, you know, it cuts the risk down a little bit, but, so that means if you take precautions, you'll probably be all right.
Yep. Okay.
If you remember last year, we had to close playgrounds after a certain time.
Yeah, yeah. Got really bad, yeah.
For the events, et cetera, so it's the same deal.
Mr. Slaven, Mr. Slaven?
No.
He's actually.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you, buddy.
It's okay.
But we want to hear you.
It's fine.
Okay.
Let's move on.
Announcements, Judy?
No, thank you.
Jim?
Um, no.
I don't have anything either. Next up, citizens' comments.
Hi, my name is Pat Lester, I'm at Cormez Drive, and I know many of you. I'm, I'm here to, to talk about the recent event, which was.
Excuse me.
The removal.
Sir, closer.
Recent event, which was the removal of basketball courts from, basketball backboards and rims from all public playgrounds, and I've, I am completely aware, familiar with a lot of the precipitating events that happened at Hammond School and the concerns, and I think all of us certainly are concerned about COVID-19 and, and the rules, and that the group that used the, used the playground for at least a couple of weeks, and maybe a couple of weeks before that, in organized, large group fashion, were completely out of bounds, that they were in complete violation of the state guidelines, and were a risk to their community.
Judy, email's back up.
However.
Email's back up.
Since Phase Two, and then in Phase Three, I think it's important to also understand that the use of basketball courts is completely allowed by state regs, and this is authorized, the, the controlling state agency in these, these, these rules is the Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and there were the Phase Two guidelines, which were published on June 9th, and the, then the subsequent Phase Three guidelines that are published on July 3rd, both have exactly the same language, and just, I will, I will read you the language, if there's any question, because I think it's important that we understand what the rules, what the guidelines say. Under the heading, page two of these regulations, these, these guidelines, because I think it's important to understand these are guidelines, "All outdoor athletic fields, courts, and other playing surfaces, perenn, basketball, tennis, baseball, football, soccer, skate parks, et cetera, can be utilized by the public during Phase Two for general recreation." That same wording is found in Phase Three. To be fair, there's, the next sentence is also important, and it's the same in both Phase Two and Phase Three. It says, "Athletic fields, courts, and other playing surfaces at parks, reservations, and open space managed by municipalities or other organizations for public use is available at the discretion of the city or town it is in or the managing organization." So I think it's clear that the town has the authority to close off the courts, that's not what's at question, but I think that the closing off of the courts to deal with a clear violation, a clear violation of the rules, has the effect of taking those same courts, which are completely authorized under state guidelines, taking it away from the use of all other citizens, people like me, senior citizen, people like families, small children, mothers and daughters, anyone who goes to Lopes or Hammond is likely to see at any given time a small group socially distanced, shooting baskets. But when you take away the rims and the backboards, you take that away. So we're trying to solve a problem with a group of players, and we're then denying another group. So I'd like to have us think, I'd like to have you all think a little bit more about how we can manage this better. I, I certainly know all of the people who are involved in organizing the Hammond events, I've known them for years, and I also know that they're all, that both, that the two major ones are extremely sorry that they let this get out of hands, they're very regretful, and they would like to see a resolution to this. And I would urge, I would urge the town to work just a little harder at trying to keep the courts open to people who use them correctly, and do perhaps a little more to keep people who are using them incorrectly away. I would suggest at a minimum that you use signage. I think that there is a lot of uncertainty about what the rules are, and there's no signage, there's no signage which states the rules.
Right.
And I, and I think that simple signage, simply saying, "No group basketball, no group basketball allowed under the current guidelines," and that there will not be group basketball allowed until a vaccine is determined, because that is what Phase Four is all about. And then you have, you have the tools in place to then have people say, "Hey, can't you read? You shouldn't be here if you're in a group, we don't organize it. The organizers have agreed they will not organize." So I guess that's, that's all I really am saying, and I, I would urge just a more thoughtful and more comprehensive approach. I would say that other towns who are looking at this in the area, some towns have looked at single baskets per court, one basket per court, so there's no incentive to play full-court basketball. I think that's fine, I think you're, you're at least then allowing a family to, you know, a couple to shoot, to have drills, and, and be compliant with Phase Two and Phase Three rules.
Thank you. Could you really use that if you're going to speak?
All right. If I may, just to address the comments, last Sunday, July 12th, we received numerous complaints in the dispatcher through the police station of a very large crowd.
Speak up loud.
You can hear me?
Can you hear her?
Right into it.
Can you hear me?
Close, that's all.
Closer.
Numerous complaints of hundreds of people gathered at Hammond Basketball Court. Upon investigation, there was DJs, there was food trucks, full-on basketball tournaments, no masks in sight, clear safety and health violations going on. At that point, we decided to meet with the organizers, Aaron Struthers and Jordan Rizendez. We had a very productive meeting on Wednesday, the 15th, and at that point, it was determined that there is no way to control basketball games, pickup games, dunk contests. The only thing that's allowed under the governor's reopening mandate is single-play drills, one person on the court. I was informed that, that's not going to happen, you know, there's going to be violations in every court. We can't enforce, the Board of Health cannot go around to every court to make sure that individuals are using the courts the way that the governor intended, one person at a time shooting. Jordan and I had a long conversation with him today, we were of the opinion on Wednesday that the only solution was to take down all the nets. If we leave up one net, it allows half-court play, dunks, free throws, groups gathering, all right, that wasn't an option. So this afternoon, you know, Jordan and I spoke, and he said, I could use his name, he is supporting the town 100% by removing the nets. He understands at this point, it's a safety issue with COVID. We were in violation of the governor's mandate by allowing these events, or even allowing the use of the basketball courts.
But that's, I'm sorry, but that's not what the regulations say.
It is, sir.
That's not, I'm sorry, these, these are the official regulations, if you follow the citations.
We're not going to get into a debate.
I know, I know.
On this, it's actually, the Board of Health has jurisdiction over these, these matters.
Exactly.
The only reason that I asked the Assistant Town Administrator to address what you, what you were telling us is because we do know it's a matter of some interest in the community, and this was an opportunity to sort of get the other part of the story out there as well, about the meeting with the players, the understandings that, that the officials have arrived at with the players, and in particular with Jordan Rizendez, and so, I'm going to be honest with you. Personally, and I speak probably only for myself, but I would hope others would agree, I'm not looking to sharpshoot the governor's regulations to look for loopholes so that things can happen that increase the risk of spreading the virus. My concern is that, and I think the concern of the Board of Health, and the governor, is that, you know, activities that are going to be group activities, and let's face it, basketball's a group activity, you're not going to have a hoop up and see one kid shooting hoops, that's just not going to happen. As soon as the second kid comes down the street, now you got two. As soon as you get eight more, now you got five on five. We don't have the resources to patrol, so that's why the decision was made, and that's why the organizers of this event, you know, concurred with that. You know, the flip side of the conversations with them, when I spoke with them as part of one of the meetings, was, I said, "Look, you know, in order to do what you guys were doing, you need a permit from the town." Now, obviously, right now, we're not handing out any permits, but, you know, I think, looking at what they were doing, it was incredible, the way, the way they were promoting basketball, Wareham basketball, I mean, it had become an East Coast brand by that point. The other thing is that these, these players now were sort of celebrities, so they can't even go to the basketball court without drawing a crowd.
Right.
And so, this was all done out of an abundance of caution. It wasn't to punish anybody, it wasn't to take anything away from anybody, it was done for public health reasons. So, I mean, that, that's, that's the position that the Board of Health has adopted, that's the position that the town administration, which under the charter controls town facilities, not us.
Right.
They've adopted, and, you know, from my perspective, I certainly support what we've done, but I do look forward to reopening, and hopefully next summer, it would be great if we could get those guys to put a heck of a tournament together.
I have talked to them, and they are willing, Jordan wants to wait until it's safe to do so, but we're 100% on board for championing any tournaments, they're committed to the community, I applaud their commitment, you know, we just have to wait till it's safe under COVID. Just for additional information, we did reach out to the state, the Board of Health Director did, and they absolutely verified that we had the authority and we had the obligation to take those nets down.
So I hope, I hope that answers some of your concerns, it wasn't, it wasn't done out of a desire to punish anybody.
No, and I.
Or to prevent people from, from having recreational opportunities, we understand.
And as I said, I completely understand that, I am, and I am completely supportive of the ban of groups. I think there is another group, though, that also, that also is now penalized.
Yeah, it's true.
And, and, and that's all I'm suggesting, is there may be ways to, to mitigate those losses that people have without taking the extreme route, and I, and I would just encourage the town to consider that.
Patrick?
Yeah, so I, it's technically, we've, you only have five minutes for this, but it's okay.
I know.
And by the way, you've been very eloquent about this, and I appreciate that. A lot of times we get people up here, they just come yelling at us, and we're right out of the box. So you've been very eloquent, and I love the way you presented yourself, and that's very nice. Unfortunately, I'll tell you what happened, once upon a time, we had our golf courses open, and we left them stay open, even during the pandemic, because we figured you got to be able to social distance on a golf course, right? I mean, how can you not? I mean, there's acreage to, to social distance, right? Figured that's perfect, so we left them open, and then all of a sudden, we go by there one day, and everybody's gathering in the parking lot.
Right.
Because, you know, whatever, so we had to shut them down. We didn't want to shut them down, we don't want to shut the basketball courts down. My son's a basketball player, he's 6'6" tall, and he loves to play basketball, and I'd love to see him out there playing basketball, but it's just not going to work right this minute, and hopefully sooner than later we'll get going, because I want you to know, even he is very upset about this, so, and I'm sorry that it's, you know, that you're not going to get what you need, or whatever, and it's really not even in our purview, this is totally in the Board of Health's purview, and they make decisions based on health, not based on any other thing. They don't base it on, you know, what sport it is, whatever, they base it strictly on health, and, you know, and I, but I appreciate you coming in and giving us some of your time, thank you.
I'd like to say something very quick, just so you know, I had written to Chairman Tittlebaum asking that this be put on the agenda for this evening. I had spoke with Ms. Allen England earlier today, saying that we need to address it because we just can't bury our heads in the sand over it.
Right.
It's not our decision, but we have listened to both sides, and we do understand, and, you know, we feel bad of what had to happen, and this had been going on about six weeks, it was just growing.
Exactly.
And growing, and growing, so unfortunate is what it is, and I appreciate you coming in.
Well, I, I wanted to be a, a third party that just framed, I thought, the other side of it.
No, this was actually.
That's really what I wanted to do.
This actually has been very constructive, because, you know, we do have COVID-19 update on the agenda, and we certainly anticipated discussing this then.
Right.
But it just happened that we did it now, frankly, at the beginning of the meeting.
Right.
When maybe more people are watching, because we don't tend to be that exciting in the viewership.
Yeah, isn't that the truth?
But this is your opportunity, Peter.
It's like watching the grass grow.
All right, thank, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, thanks.
Appreciate it. Uh, let's see.
We have a dog hearing.
We do have a dog hearing, but we also got an application from Gourmet Garden, is there anybody here for that, for the outdoor seating?
Citizens.
Oh, do we have one more citizen?
Yes, please.
Okay, come on up.
Thank you.
Can you give us the 30-second miracle critique?
Yes, about. Sandy Slaven, I was expecting to hear the discussion regarding the CPA grant request, and is there anybody here for that?
We actually, we did that early because we had an executive session scheduled for 6:30, Mrs. Neal was here already, so we took care of that beforehand, so I can, yeah.
I heard you say you went right into executive session, so I didn't realize you had had an open session before.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I actually omitted, omitted saying that, but we did.
So did she get approval to submit it?
Yes, we did authorize to go ahead.
CPC has their meeting tomorrow night, and I wanted to see if we could accept it.
She brought that up, and she hoped to prevail upon you to allow her to submit for fall, but that's your call.
The amount was $150,000.
Up to.
Up to.
Up to.
I, I did have a hint as to what they would be looking for, I'm just going to be as quick as I can. Last May, I asked the Board to give me some timeframe as to when articles are due for fall town meeting, so we know when to schedule our deadline for CPC, so I'm still waiting for that date.
Yeah, we're going to be setting.
So I've changed my date.
Yeah, the next time we meet, we will be doing that sort of lengthy document that I read off, that's the process for a town meeting that starts with, you know, we decide to hold a town meeting, we open the warrant, the warrant closes, blah, 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 so that will be forthcoming. You should be, under the new rules, you should be good, I think, off the top of my head, probably about September 20th, but I'm going to have to confirm that.
Because currently, we've always used the second week in September as a due date for our articles, which is why CPC has an early deliverable date, so we have time. Now.
Yeah, it's right around the end of July, beginning of August, that we set that timeline, so.
I'm pleased to see that you're looking at increasing the parking lot fees, I just hope someone gets there to put out tickets for those that are not residents, but that's another discussion for later.
Well, just for your information, I know that that was an issue a couple of weeks ago, and since that time, and since the Department of Natural Resources offices were made aware of it, they've, they've been out burning through three and four ticket books on a weekend day.
You can talk about it when it's on the agenda, but I just wanted to say, I see you're going to assign liaisons tonight, and every year, I come in front of you and ask the same thing, if you're going to be a liaison, can you have the courtesy to attend at least one meeting to thank the people that are volunteering their time to be on those committees? I mean, I ask, I know it's not a rule, I know it's not a law, but I do ask. I know some do attend their liaison-appointed committees, some come nowhere near us, and I, it would be nice if you made an attempt. When we invite you to a meeting, I really do expect them, you to come, and we've had some that did not come to our meetings when invited, and that was very disappointing, but please, if you're going to be liaison, step up and at least say thank you to the people that are there volunteering. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is another citizen back there?
Sir?
Is there a human citizen petition, I got a complaint?
Oh, come on up, we're still doing it.
Okay.
How are you?
Hi, I.
We've got to, we've got to get your name, name for the record, sir.
My name is Joseph J. Cadoza.
Yeah.
I live at 2801 Cranberry Highway. I have a complaint on that park and ride in Maple Spring Road. Number one, it's been going on for years, I've been up there several times before I got crazy. Those buses go for training, in the state law, you do not back up buses. You've got that beep, 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 beep. I had it as early as quarter past 5:00 in the morning, that is stopped, then they start at 6:00, they go right up until 12:00. The hell, I worked in construction for 50 years, I'm retired, and I can't leave my windows open? That's not right. I was wondering if the Board of Selectmen do something, I've been up there, and I've talked to them, you've got buses, buses come from Blue Hills, Boston.
Yep.
On a Sunday, Sunday, have you me? I go up there, and I spoke to them about it, I said, "Today's a large day, you people that, it's, something's going to happen, because I'm going to snap, or they're going to snap." I go up there, and I speak to somebody, it's Amherst Buses, I speak to one guy, next day, same thing, I speak to another guy, and it's different buses come from the Cape, different, something's going to be done, because.
Well, we have a noise by alarm, we also have a code enforcement officer, so, perhaps we can make or refer this to them. Allen?
The park and rides usually are owned by the state, number one, so it's, for me, I have the ability to go, and I will sit and meet with Mass DOT, I'll give you some answers in a week or so.
You've got people coming from all over the state, but they, it's not.
I understand, Joe, it's just, you know, we don't have control of this.
I've got night construction, that highway, I don't know, they've been working on it for the last three years.
Yep.
They come, all of a sudden, you're jumping out of bed, boom, they're, they're dumping the resource on the top of the hill there.
Give me a week, let me see what I can do.
Okay.
Who permits that?
And then, huh?
Who permits the use of that? Who permits the use of that by these buses?
It's the state.
State.
Owned by the state.
It's park and rides, they have places...
State highway.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Park and ride is to park your vehicle, park your truck, or something like that.
But they also...
They made that a training center.
But they also...
They do, they give licenses there.
Okay, they can very well do license there, but they should, I worked construction 50 years, and we worked, we have, on machines, I either put them down or don't use it at all.
Yeah.
Because it's annoying.
The park and ride is designed also for all the private bus companies to be able to stop, pick up passengers as part of the deal, because people...
That's not the problem.
I understand, but you're saying that they're making noise, so let me see what I can do.
You get, no one believes me.
I believe you.
I heard for two months, the new school, they had a hell of a time knocking that building down, and you hear it, but they were from, like, from 8:00 to 4:00, 8:00 to 3:30.
I live over the Tempest Snob boat ramp, believe me, I know about back up and beep, beep, beep at 3:00 in the morning. So I can sympathize with you. So we'll deputize Alan to figure it out with the state.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I still got a can left.
How you feeling, by the way?
Huh?
How you doing?
Good, fine, thank you.
It's good to see you.
Okay, moving on. We're going to jump right down.
Dog hearing.
Dog hearing, 7:30.
Do you have the dog hearing? We don't have anybody here from Gourmet Garden, do we?
No.
Okay, then let's have a motion to reopen the continued dog hearing.
So made.
Second.
Make it a roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
PETA? Yes. Procedurally, last time we met, two of the selectmen were not in the room, they were attending remotely. They had great difficulty following what was going on at the conclusion of what appeared to be the evidence. It was apparent that they could not vote because they had not been able to hear enough of what was going on. So I'm going to ask the board to disregard everything we heard then, and to, we're going to start afresh here. So, starting off, would everybody who intends to testify, please stand up? Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I...
Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Okay, thank you, you've all been sworn. I'm going to ask the animal control officer to come in up here and read the complaint into the record.
I just want to make a note here that I was not the responding officer, and I was not at the first hearing because I was out on medical leave, and I just found out today that I was doing the hearing. So if I'm slightly disorganized, that is why, so I apologize. April 1, 2020, I hereby make a complaint here on the dogs owned and kept by Jo... Jonah? Jonah Barbara, 173 Swiss Beach Road. Her dogs are dangerous by reason of, one, on March 31, 2020, the dogs were loose on Swiss Beach Road and attacked a small Chihuahua-type dog unprovoked. The attack inflicted severe and traumatic injury to the dog, resulting in humane euthanasia of the animal. In addition, the officer, Officer Kimball, had a complaint received on 4/120 from a party, I don't have their name, reporting that the dogs had attacked her two dogs on February 28, but that she did not report it until April 1. So he had two incidences listed, but he was unable to talk to me, and I have actual additional incidences with these dogs, and I've had problems with them in the past. We had two prior attacks with the same dogs. Let's see. And again, I apologize for my disorganization, because the printer was not working, so I wasn't able to print anything up. On 8/8/14, we had a dog attack by dogs owned by the same dog owner. 8/11, 2015, I had a dog attack by the same dog owner. 2018, February 18, 2016, we had a loose citation for the dog that had attacked prior. On 7/26, 2016, the dogs were again loose, and on 6/12, 2017, we had an additional dog bite. These were not noted at the first hearing, nor were they in the complaint, because the officer responding was not aware.
Is there a narrative report from, in your file, from the officer who did respond to the incident?
Yes, I have his report, and we do have the dog owner, who was the witness to the incident. I was going to print copies for everybody, and Matt was trying to help me get that going, but unfortunately, I don't have copies for everybody. I have one, but with the situation at hand, I don't know if we can pass it around.
We do have them. We do have them.
You have them?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, they're in the file.
They're in the file, they're also on our...
If you would be so kind as to read the responding officer's report into the record.
Also, I could not find my reading glasses. Today's not been a good day.
Okay, then.
I apologize. Okay. On March 31, 2020, at approximately 10:50 a.m., Officer Joshua Kimball of the Wareham Department of Natural Resources was called to Swiss Beach Road for reported dog attack in progress. While responding to the location, Officer Brayley had arrived on scene and stated that one of the dogs were deceased. Upon arrival, Officer McGuire was on scene, and with the help of Officer Brayley, was able to secure two loose pit bulls that ultimately killed another dog. The owner of the now-deceased dog was identified as, I don't know if I'm going to say this right, Konstantinos Koulouris?
Yep.
Our Koulouris was walking with her small black and tan Chihuahua on Swiss Beach Road when two large unleashed pit bulls came running after her. Our Koulouris stated to Officer McGuire that she picked her dog up as the two pit bulls came after her, and the two dogs were jumping at her. She dropped her dog, and the dogs did not attack her, instead they killed her Chihuahua. See attached photos, I do have the photos. There was no owners inside of these two pit bulls. Officer Kimball says that, "I put those, I put the two pit bulls, one black and white female and the other gray and white male, in the back of the animal control van for transport to Lakeville Animal Shelter." Barbara had contacted Officer McGuire in the area of Swiss Beach and claimed the two dogs as hers. I made phone contact with Barbara, and she claimed the two dogs as hers. I asked how the dogs got out, and she stated that one of her kid's friends left the door open sometime around 10:00 a.m. this morning, and the dogs have been out since. Barbara further stated that normally the dogs go out to a pen in the backyard. I asked Barbara if the dogs were up to date on rabies, and she stated they were. I asked her to provide proof of that, she did. The rabies vaccines had expired 2019, and both dogs had not been licensed since 2016. I advised Barbara that she would be receiving a citation in the mail for two unleashed dogs, two unlicensed dogs, two loose dogs. I provided Barbara with instructions on how to retrieve her dogs from the animal shelter, place the dogs in verbal quarantine over the phone, and also advised her of safety restrictions, muzzle and leash when outside the property, to follow for her animals until the dog hearing. At approximately 2:30 p.m., I contacted with Kay Koulouris to provide him with the owner of the pit bulls' information. He stated to me that his dog was, in fact, not deceased at the time, and he brought it to the veterinarian, and they wanted $10,000, and he elected to have the dog humanely euthanized. He stated that his wife was in absolute shock and sad over the loss of the dog. I provided the owner information to Kay Koulouris, and also told him that a copy of this report would be available to him at the police station in a few days. I also advised him that we would be holding a dangerous dog hearing against Barbara.
Okay, thank you. Next, trying to think here. Procedurally, I think I will call the owners of the deceased dog to come forward. Probably one at a time would be best, and I would ask the animal control officer to just step back to that chair that's over there while... Hi, and if you'll state your name for the record?
My name is Agapi Khorstakakis. I'm the daughter of the victims, I'm also their attorney. This is my mother, Alisa Koulouris, and she's the woman who was walking the dog that morning when the incident occurred. You'll hear my mother talk about her dog Dexter. He was a little, small, 10-pound minpin. He looks very similar to a Chihuahua, that's probably why the dog officer thought he was a Chihuahua when he responded on the scene. She'll tell you all about how she looked forward to walking her dog every morning, it was her morning routine. Dexter was a rescue dog that she had saved from the shelter and had been a loving member of the home for many years. That morning turned into a nightmare, and she'll tell you all about that, how these dogs came out of nowhere, and they attacked him, and they tore him to pieces. These dogs are vicious, this owner is on notice. The dog officer testified before you, right here, and told you the number of times this woman has had dogs that have attacked people, have bitten animals, have been loose in the area. This home is located footsteps to the beach and to the playground. This board must act today and order the euthanization of these dogs to keep this community safe. And I also encourage you to order an injunction and an order to prevent her from further owning any dangerous dogs in this community. I encourage you to take this action today.
As a matter of law, we can't, we can't prevent somebody from owning dogs. That's not within our jurisdiction. All we can do is deal with the incident at hand, under the general laws, under the, also our own town dangerous and barking dog bylaw. So that's what we're limited to, so we can't order somebody to never own dogs again, that would never hold up. Can your, can your mother testify as to the events of that day?
But as well as the vicious nature of these dogs, she keeps replacing one dog with another vicious dog. That ends up being a problem in the community. So I think that you can take some action to prevent the further vicious dogs that she's, if she wants to enjoy a nice, small dog that won't hurt anyone.
Well, we can't even do that. Every dog has its day, and this is the day for her dogs, current dogs.
And so you'll hear from my mother, and she'll tell you all about the incident that occurred, and how she was, she can't even sleep. She's been having nightmares, she's been torn apart from all of this.
May I just ask you, you are Agapi Strati...
I'll write my name down.
I have it right here.
Okay.
Sorry about the pronunciation, but that's, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Alisa Koulouris. I was walking my, my dog that morning, and I sat down on the bench at the end of the road on the beach, and we were enjoying the day. I turned my head, and all of a sudden, I see these big, big dogs, two of them, running towards me, and they had no leash. I just didn't know what to do at the time. I picked up my dog, and I hugged him. Those dogs came to me and jumped, and I was so scared for my life. So I put my dog down, and I pulled, those dogs attacked him right away, and I pulled my dog with a leash I had, but the leash got cut off, so I couldn't do anything else. I started running and screaming, and this nice gentleman was driving down, and he helped me. He was bipping his horn, and I also have the affidavit of the gentleman that helped me. And he bipped his horn, and he went towards the dogs, tried to break the fight, but nothing happened. The dogs wouldn't let go. My little dogs had a fight for like 20 minutes before the police arrived. The police came there, my dog was on the ground. Those two big pit bulls, they were drinking his blood. They cut his leg off, they were drinking his blood. I can't even think of this. I never in my life thought I had to go through this. Neither did my dog have to die like this. This is so unfair, so unfair. I just don't know what to say. The only thing is that I can say, I love dogs, but these two dogs, they're not dogs, they're not the animals that people have for pets. I don't know why people keep those vicious dogs around. It's just terrible, I can't say anything else. I am still shaking from that day. I'm still thinking, what could I have done? And there was nothing for me to do at the time.
No. We understand that. Patrick?
Okay, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, and I know it's going to be difficult for you, but I'm trying to get some information in that didn't come in through, from the gentleman, that grabbed you, and didn't he put you in his car?
Yes.
He did, right, in order to protect you?
He let me sit in the car.
Right? Now, the dogs jumped at you to get it out of your hand, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And then the two dogs grabbed the dogs and pulled on it from each end, is that not correct?
Yes, they pulled the dog.
Okay, so they were pulling on the dog? This is information that I got from this gentleman, I called and spoke to this gentleman.
I have it.
So what I'm asking her to do is to verify whether the information I heard is correct. I can't bring it in specifically because it's hearsay, and it wasn't done as an affidavit.
We're not, if I understand correctly from the witness, however, did you not say you had an affidavit from somebody?
Yes, I do have it with me.
He said that he, he provided my mother the copy, but the copy that she has isn't the signed copy. He informed her that he had turned it into the dog officer and to the board, so that it should be in your record.
Yeah, the...
I have not seen that.
It was notarized, but it was not done in affidavit form, so it's just a letter.
Well, I'm going to ask counsel whether we should even accept this as evidence, and if so, how should we accord its value?
I have a quick question.
Actually, I'll ask counsel to review the document before we hear of it.
Ms. Gourviat-Dill has something.
We had no way of contacting him.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready. Yeah, one second, yes?
I'd just like to say, I don't think it will be needed in this specific case between having an eyewitness here and a pastor with the dog on our wrist. I don't think it's going to be needed one way or the other.
Well, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is actually an affidavit, although this is the unsigned copy. Were it signed, it would be signed under a penalty of perjury of the state of Massachusetts that the information provided herein is true and correct to the best of my knowledge.
That's not the one that I received.
Well...
Okay, then I guess we'll proceed without the documents.
But I was able to, I mean, I'm certainly able to ask the questions...
Absolutely.
Like I did, which brought the stuff in anyway.
That's fine.
So exactly what he told us, she just verified. It's as simple as that. And that's why I asked you those questions. I know they're difficult to answer, but I need to have you put them on the record, okay?
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did the other dog owner reach out to you to talk to you about your veterinary bills at all?
No. No.
Okay. You did incur some veterinary bills when you took your dog to the vet?
Yes, I paid for my pocket.
They charged you, and I assume they charged for the euthanasia as well? And you have not heard from the other dog owner about compensating you for that? Okay, thank you. Questions from the board for this witness?
Most, thank you.
Judy?
Yes, thank you. In this report that we got from Mr. Kimball, the Department of Natural Resources officer, it says that the dogs were originally noted to be out at 10:00, and then this happened at 10:50. I can't find it right.
Yes, that's correct, 52nd, 50 minutes, at least 50 minutes.
You'd have to, you'd have to use the mic, but...
10:50.
Okay, Ms. Gourviat-Dill confirms that the dogs were loose for 50 minutes.
Yes, that's, the owner said that the dogs have been let loose, the owner stated that the dogs had been loose at 10:00 a.m. This incident happened at 10:50 a.m., so at least 50 minutes.
This incident happened at ten fifty AM, so at least fifty minutes the dogs had been loose.
The owner of the dogs, the two dogs, stated, okay, thank you. May I ask what the bill was for the euthanasia?
Five hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, any questions for the witness?
You were sitting down at the Anderson Swift Beach Road?
Yes, there is a bench there, and I sat down with my dog, and we were just enjoying the day.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, anything further for the witness before I give the defendant dog owner a chance to address the allegations? Okay, hearing nothing, I'll ask you two ladies to please sit down.
My father also responded right after, I think he wants to address the board as well.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Can you come up?
Yes.
Thank you, members of the board, for having me here tonight. It's a really difficult time for all of us, and especially for my family. I've been coming down to Workham for over twenty, from nineteen seventy-seven, and the last twenty-two years I bought a house on Swift Beach, and for the last six years I've been living on Swift Beach year-round. I'm retired, I was in the restaurant business, and I liked Workham, I go fishing, and I thought I can live down here with my family. So my wife is with me, I have four grandchildren who are with us all summer long, and over the years too, on the weekends sometimes I'm cut down. So I feel so comfortable and so protected, until I start going with my wife in the morning, take a walk with the little dog because we both have diabetes. And when I want to that side, usually I go up to Swift's next side and come back home. But my wife wanted to go down there because of the bench on Swift Beach down by the ocean, and she sits there with the dog. Sometimes I take my grandchildren with us, and, you know, when I go by the house, the dogs was up on the second floor, and when I go by, my little dog was barking a little bit, and they come on the window, and I thought a lot of times it was gonna go through the little screen on the window and jump out. They are very vicious dogs. I have my own pit bulls too, and one who raised him from little one, he was an angel, he was eighty pounds. And I had him on a restaurant twenty-four hours open on Albany Street, like on Melina Cass. I don't know if you know the area in Boston. They never, never bark anybody, they've never done nothing to nobody. And then a friend of mine from Maine, he gave me another little dog, almost twenty pounds pit bull, but he was vicious. I had to put him to sleep, because one day my son-in-law bring his friend in the house, and he started going to his door, he went to my door, and he opened the door, and the dog was right behind the door. So I put him down, even if I love the dog very much. But these people here on the house, they're not normal people like you and me. These people, they're doing something else in the house, and that's why they keeping these dogs in there, to protect them and their own business, whatever they do. They are very vicious dog, and I shared them, and I told my wife not to go this way again. And that day, unfortunately, I wasn't there either, because if I was there, I got a crowbar in my truck, and I was gonna go after them no matter what. I wasn't gonna let me tear my dog to pieces. And unfortunately, my wife too, she had nightmares, she doesn't sleep anymore. She said the dog is calling her. I said the dog is going. And even that day, after Joshua, the officer, the animal control officer, she took my dog and she wanted to take him, I said, no, I'm gonna take my dog, and I'm gonna bury him in my house. So I took the dog, and we put him on the deck in the back of the house, and then my wife saw his belly was going up and down. So I see he was breathing. So we called the hospital, and we took him down in Butter Bay. We took him down there. But nobody can tell me for sure the dog was gonna leave. And the dog, she told me, has severe wounds on his body, and he lost a lot of blood. So, nobody knew he was gonna leave, or he's gonna come back to normal, no way. You know, you hardly see him breathing, and they asked me for ten thousand dollars. I don't have ten thousand dollars to give, so. I have nothing with these people, I don't know these people. But I think these people, they're not supposed to have dogs, because they're not responsible enough to take care of them. If the dog got open from some of the guys they say was in the house, why shouldn't I go after them? She never showed up in there when it was killing my dog. Nobody came there, and I tell the police officer where the house was, because I went through the street about five, ten times. So, if you're responsible, you go after your dogs. You don't leave them on the street, dangerous dog like that. Like I said before, when I go by with my dog and my wife, I saw him on the window, and they are very vicious dogs. I deal with them up in Boston, because I deal with Roxbury and Dorchester, a lot of drugs and a lot of things like that going around, and they use those dogs. So, my dogs, it was right there in the restaurant twenty-four hours a day, and never bother anybody. It's how you're gonna brought them up yourself, with their babies. Are you gonna send them after somebody, they're gonna learn that. If you tell them not to, it's like a baby's. Thank you, I don't have nothing else to say.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if I got a little emotional, but.
No, it's okay.
You know?
We understand.
Those little things, they become part of your family, just like my kids. I love my kids, I love my grandkids, and I'm sure you do the same thing to people. What about if you take a walk with your kids, and you find two dogs like this and that, and they go after your grandkids, what are you gonna do? I'm gonna give my life for them if I have to. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Titlebaum, I have a couple of questions that I.
Yes.
Okay. On the report, the incident report, Ms. Corviet-Dill, or maybe attorney, Alyssa is listed at Three Mead Street, Arlington, Mass., but that's not correct.
Oh, that's wrong.
It should be Wareham, Mass., thank you.
Yeah.
And second of all, may I know, was anybody, person injured? Your wife, the animal control officer, was anybody scratched, or was there any, any kind of?
I don't think so. I don't see any. I mean, I was there when the police officer was there, and it was a girl. I know her because she came to me nervous. I used to work part-time there in Halden, and I know her, but I got some issues in there with credit cards.
So somebody, the individuals were able to grab the dogs? Did they have collars on?
No, Joshua, the animal officer, took him from the ground, and he brought him to his car. And I say, no, I don't want you to take the dog, I'm gonna take my dog.
No, sir, I'm asking about the pit bulls, sir.
The dogs that attacked the pit bulls.
Yeah.
You weren't there?
I was there when they were taking up the second.
Yeah, no, I'm asking about the two pit bulls, if somebody contained them, or who was able to capture them, get, did they have collars on?
The animal control officer, he, he captured the, there were two big pit bulls. One was like huge, it was a gray pit bull. He couldn't get him, it was very hard for him to get him. So finally he got him with his leash that he like pulled.
Yeah.
And then he gave him a cookie and took him. The first dog, he got him a little bit easier, the second dog was very tough, and he got both of them.
Thank you.
And I thought that it would put them to sleep right away, because they did kill my dog, but I'm surprised they were still living.
Yeah.
When the officer responded, and you'll see this in the report, he told my parents that the dog was deceased. When he, when he took Dexter, he said that your dog is dead, and he was ready to take him. And my dad said, no, let me take him home, you know, we wanna, we wanna bury him. And then, you know, shortly thereafter, that's when my mother saw his chest rising slightly, and they rushed him to the vet. And you have to remember, this was at the height of the pandemic, there were thousands of people, you know, every day being diagnosed, you couldn't even go to a hospital. It's by the grace of God that my mother wasn't attacked by these dogs. She tried her best to just pull him away, and she couldn't, and they were jumping, and then thankfully Mr. Barrett came by with his car, and she was able to sit in there. All I can say, I just urge this board to please act and to, to keep this community safe. This house is, with these dogs, are literally footsteps from the beach and the playground. This could have very been, very easily been a small child, unfortunately, you know, I hate to say that, but that's what could have happened, that would have been the reality here. And I understand, I've read in the paper about prior incidents where this board has acted, and you have ordered that dogs be humanely euthanized when they've attacked both a person. I understand there was a case last year in April where they had attacked a person, and then later on had attacked an animal, and you ordered that those dogs be humanely euthanized. So I would ask you to follow that precedent in this case, and to move forward and to order that these dogs be humanely euthanized. We all love animals, we hate to see them euthanized, but in this case, you know, this owner, unfortunately, she's not responsible with these dogs, she can't take care of them, she can't control them, and they need to be euthanized to keep us safe in the community. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I'm gonna ask Ms. Barber to come up, please. You've heard the testimony from the witnesses.
Yes, I'm terribly sorry. I haven't come to you because I know, I would, I would be very upset, and I didn't know how he was gonna react to me, that's why I really haven't come to you to say I'm sorry yet, but I'm really, I'm truly sorry, and I will pay your euthanizing, I will pay the five hundred dollars, just give me the bill, I will pay that for you. I don't have no problem doing that. But that's the only reason why I haven't come to you earlier, because I know I would have been very upset if that happened to my dog, I wouldn't have wanted to look at the people that it happened, you know, that's why. But I'm truly sorry.
Okay. What do you have to say about what you've heard here tonight?
First of all, my dogs aren't, they were, they, I wasn't there when this happened, I wasn't, I wasn't there, so I really can't say. And, and the accounts that she's talking about, my dogs, I had prior dogs that she's talking about, these dogs have never had a case of, this is the first case that they've ever had. These are, these are, these dogs are only three years old, so the cases that she's talking about are like prior dogs that I've had, that they're never, not with these dogs. So, but they've never bitten anybody, they've never hurt anybody, they're not, they're not people aggressive at all. In this one incident, I don't, I really don't know, I wasn't there, I can't really say what happened, but. So I have to say, I mean, I don't know.
Patrick?
A question then, so if you had other dogs?
Yeah.
And these dogs, there were some incidents in two thousand seventeen, it's two thousand twenty, that's three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
What happened to the other dogs?
They, one of, one of them my son has, and the other one my cousin has. They're the mother and father of these two dogs.
So, you gave them away?
Yeah. They're, they're, and no, no, nothing has happened, they've, they've been with them for years now, and there's no other incidents. One of the, the mother, she walks around the neighborhood like friendly as can be, no leash, nothing, so.
I'd like to ask the dog officer, if I could, could you come to the microphone? If, if there were incidences with these particular dogs, I mean, obviously you know what these, who these dogs are.
I just wanna ask, what's the name of the, I, the officer responded and not put down the name of the two dogs that were involved in this?
Cow and Chapo.
I'm sorry, what were their names?
Cow and Chapo.
Okay, so I do have a report here about Cow. So Sukie is no longer with you?
No.
But Cow is. So Cow, on August tenth, two thousand fifteen, we had an incident with Cow. That's the, he was a ten-month-old male pit bull at the time.
She's a female.
Cow?
Yeah, she's a female.
Okay, because I, all right, well, we had it as male, but it looks like it's the same dog that you owned then? Oh, you named it, you have two dogs named Cow?
No, I have one dog named Cow.
So, you didn't have a black and white male named Cow?
No.
Because we have this dog, at this time, two thousand fifteen, Cow was having an incident, that, that's not the same Cow that you have now?
No.
Well, do we know the age?
Then I'm corrected.
Do you know the age of the dogs from your records?
So that would have been two thou, well, the dogs haven't been licensed for a couple of years, so I'm not sure.
They have never been licensed, because I, the other dogs were, my old dogs were licensed, not these dogs.
Okay, so the dogs that we had problems with in the past?
Yeah, they, yeah, not these dogs, they have never been licensed, no.
Okay, because I have Cow down here twice, in fact, as a black and white pit bull, so it's two different Cows? Because the town records had a dog named Cow.
How, how old was it, she then?
So that would have been a ten-month-old, so she would have been born two thousand fifteen?
No, she's not that old. Um, I don't know, I don't know, maybe they made, maybe they mistake, I don't know.
Is the dog now black and white?
Yeah, she is black and white, she's a female.
Right, but we're talking about.
Okay, so it said the dog got excited, climbed the fence, that was a different one? You and I had a conversation, that's when I had you build the pen in the driveway?
Right, right.
With the top and the bottom?
Right.
That, that dog's gone, that was a different Cow?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
Okay. I'm corrected, I stand corrected.
That's fine. Questions?
Yes.
Judy?
The dogs have not been licensed since two thousand sixteen?
Well, they've never, like I said, they've never been licensed, like, not that, and I just licensed them, they are licensed now.
And you are aware of the licensing requirements?
Right, yeah, I, yes.
Okay. And your rabies certificate?
Yes.
Expired in two thousand nineteen?
They are, they are up to date now, with their rabies shots.
Were the prior two dogs whose name, is it Cow, like a moo cow?
Yeah.
Okay. Those dogs, were they always properly licensed?
I'm pretty sure, I, I'm pretty sure, I don't remember, I don't, I don't know. I'm pretty sure, like I said, I gave them away, so I don't, I don't even remember the dates, I couldn't even tell you. I don't know.
Okay, and your backyard has a?
Fence.
What I would call a very heavy-wired fence?
Yes.
Completely surrounding it? Or it butts up to the house so that there's, the only way out of that pen is through the house? Or is there a gate?
No, there's a gate, you open the gate.
Is this a pen?
There's a pen in the back, and then there's a fence around, I have a fenced in, around my yard, and then I also have a pen in the back for the dogs.
What is the fencing made of, then? Just the plain fencing?
Chain link.
Metal, I don't know.
Chain link?
Yeah, chain link.
Okay, chain link, so both enclosures are chain link?
Yes.
What is the height of the enclosure of the yard?
It's not, it's.
I think it's about a four foot, standard four foot.
Normal, it's, normal, yeah.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions?
I've never, I've never had any problems with them biting anybody, or no, you know, nothing like that.
Yeah, um.
Jim?
From the report of the dog officer, you had other dogs which were troublesome, and I don't know if this is the first time these dogs have been out running free, but unfortunately, you know, it is a very tight and small neighborhood, as you know, fifty by seventy-five lots, and it's very difficult to keep some types of dogs. What do you, what are your thoughts on this?
I mean, I mean, I feel bad, like I know they want me to euthanize my dogs, you know, and I probably would want the same thing if that happened to my dogs, you know, but I don't. Like I say, they're my, my children's dogs, and I did plan on when I'm, giving them to my kids when they move out, because each, each of my kids have a dog, and, you know, each, if each one of them was gonna take a dog with them when they moved out, which they're shortly, they're both, they're on their twenties now, so I mean, it's like.
And what, what have you done since that time?
Well, I've kept them, I've muzzled, and I've kept them in, in the house, muzzled, you know, I take them, they told me to muzzle them when I take them outside. I really don't, I don't, I haven't taken them on the street. I keep them in the yard.
You think that's fair to them?
Well, we did, we did.
Yeah.
At the last hearing, requiring-
I know that.
-requiring the muzzling, so-
I know that. It's, it's just, unfortunately, the dogs, you know, the dogs.
Yeah.
And I, I just wanted to know what maybe that she had done as an owner to help correct this, and that's what I was asking, so...
Yeah, well, I did keep them confined, like they asked me to.
Right, but that's it, right?
We didn't have any orders for training or anything else like that, so that wasn't, yeah.
I just was inquiring.
Yep.
Alright, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Any, any other-
I just have, I, could I ask you a couple of questions to get into the record? How many times prior to this report, you said they bit somebody and they were loose, and there were several reports?
So apparently, those were her last dogs, not the two that we're talking about today.
Well, the dates were 2000, one of them was 2018.
She said they're not the same dogs, and I wouldn't be able to prove that they're the same dogs.
Well, well, I think that's something we need to establish, yeah.
But here's what, may I speak?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. As you know, I, I'm never for euthanasia, I am always for trying to find alternative methods-
I believe that so.
-to keep the dogs confined. And here's my issue, is I've been working with the dog owner since 2014 to try and contain dogs and prevent further incidences. She was very cooperative, I told her she had to get a secure pen, she did, she put it in her driveway, I told her how to have a top, she did. One of the dogs that she no longer has was actually able to scale the six-foot pen and sneak through part of the cover, she secured that by putting up an additional section, it's on a solid bottom. The problem is, she's not always there, there's a lot of people in and out of there. The fence that contains the yard is only four feet high, and we had an incident attack where one of the dogs, not the two that she has now, but a prior dog that was related to this, actually scaled the four-foot fence. She does not own the property, so she can't put a six-foot fence around the entire property, and so when the dogs are bringing, brought out to the pen, there's a very good-sized section where they are walked from the house to the pen, and if they get away from whoever's walking them to that pen, there's a chance that they will escape. The other problem is, like we had the day that this dog was killed, is that she was not home, this was not her fault, she was not there, they were not under her care and responsibility, but someone let those dogs loose, and they were loose for nearly an hour. And in that time, this family, who was just walking down the street, and the road that she lives on, Swiss Beach Road, is extremely high traffic, all different size, shapes, families, little children, and my concern is, if this dog got, if one of these dogs got out of the control and escaped that yard, and a small child was walking a dog, even if they're not human aggressive, if a small child was walking their dog and this happened, we may be having a different conversation right now. So as much as I hate recommending humane euthanasia, I cannot trust that even if we set forth safety measures for these dogs, that they will be enforced, and I can't take the risk of somebody else getting hurt.
Can I ask a question here? Are the choices beyond humane euthanasia, surrendering it to a no-kill shelter?
It's not an option.
I'm not asking you.
No, 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 under the state-
Is that against, is that like against the law?
It, it, under the state statute, there are several options, but, I mean, she just spoke that the last dogs that we had problems with, she gave away and somebody's walking them off-leash. I'm concerned that if we ordered her, you know, gave her the option of giving the dogs away, that they would not be in a secure situation.
That's why I said to a no-kill shelter. So it wouldn't be to a friend or anything like that, it would be to a shelter who would screen the applicants to ensure that they were gonna provide a good home and it was a good fit, and that would be at the cost of the owner of the dogs to do that.
In all honesty, sir, I've been doing this for 11 years, I don't know a no-kill shelter that would take on these dogs when they have a hard enough time adopting out dogs-
No, that's okay.
...that don't have a history of killing another animal, nobody wants that responsibility.
You know, that would be an either-or, so it'd be either that, at her expense, or humane euthanasia.
We haven't, we haven't had the formal recommendation yet, so I would, I would ask-
No, no, but I'm just, I'm trying to, you know, figure out what we, what we can do-
Right.
-under the law.
You're looking at the alternatives, I understand.
Thank you.
Ultimately, what is your recommendation here formally?
With a heavy heart, humane euthanasia.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to get that on the record so we can actually-
Both of them or one of them, I mean...
I don't know that we could say that one over the other did the incident, they were both involved in the incident, so unfortunately, I wasn't there, I didn't see it, I don't-
I think one of them is more aggressive than the other, though, I think.
Oh.
Not the white one.
No.
I think the black and white one-
I think she made that clear, that they both pulled on the dog.
They both pulled on the dog.
Okay, no, no biplay, please.
I believe both the dogs were involved in the incident, and I believe that both the dogs should have the same judgment.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else?
You've heard the recommendation, is there anything you'd like to say in response?
Like, again, I've said, like, these dogs are not people aggressive, and this happened once, at one time, yes. I mean-
I understand.
And, like I said, one, maybe get rid of one and not the other.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
I wanted to ask-
Yeah, let, put the motion-
I wanted to ask Attorney Bowen on the legality of surrendering it to a no-kill shelter, could that be a condition?
I don't-
Yes.
So it could be, and you could do it as an either-or.
Yes.
At her expense.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't want that.
Alright, so motion to close the hearing.
Second. Second.
Okay, roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Me, yes. Okay, the hearing is now closed. What do we want to do here?
I move the dogs, I move the dogs both be euthanized humanely.
Second.
I'd, I'd move to amend that.
Hmm?
I would like to amend that, amend that motion.
Well, we have a motion in a, we have a motion to euthanize in a second, that's the motion that's on the floor, so that's the one we have to discuss right now, if you have-
No, I thought, I thought if you, if you make a motion to amend, that you discuss the amendment, then you go back to the original motion.
Well, that's a town meeting practice, but that's-
We follow the Robert rules of orders, don't we?
Yeah.
Uh, Robert's rules.
Oh, we do, it's in, it's in the selectmen's policies.
You know, it's atypical, but you can offer an amendment, I'll let you do it.
I would like to offer an amendment, and to give the owner the opportunity to surrender at her expense to a no-kill shelter, and/or the other alternative would be humanely euthanize the dogs.
Are you seeking to put a time limit to give the owner to find?
Oh, like within a week, you have to surrender to a shelter.
Yeah, you're not gonna find anything in a week, I can tell you that.
No, to surrender it, or, may I ask the dog officer?
So there's a couple of problems with that, because honestly, saving a dog's life is always my first choice. Number one, we're in a pandemic, so most of the shelters are running at half-staff at best, so very few shelters are taking anything. I've been struggling to find homes for the good animals that don't have any kind of history or problems in their past. You know, if she could find a no-kill shelter that would accept this dog, I would be surprised under the circumstances right now. Most of them would not want the legality of taking on a dog that has animal aggression, because they might be held responsible if there was a future incident.
Understood. I, I was asking if that would be an option. I put it out there, if we get a second, fine, if we don't, so be it.
You're the hearing authority, it's your choice, but it would not be my recommendation.
It's okay, thank you.
May I speak to his motion?
Yes, his amendment, rather, yeah.
Yeah.
Hasn't been seconded.
Oh, it wasn't seconded.
That's right.
It hasn't been seconded yet, so you gotta ask for a second first, and then she could discuss the motion.
Well, yeah, can I get a second for discussion at least? Do you want to make the second for amendments of discussion or no?
I'll make it for discussion, so that I can say what I would like to say.
Go ahead.
The owner has demonstrated a lack of responsibility in her ownership of dogs over a period of time, whether it is these two dogs or other dogs. She admits to not having licensed the dogs. She admits to having, letting the rabies certificate on at least one of the dogs expire. I, as you probably know, have had many rescued dogs, and the, these dogs have demonstrated animal aggression. The next step might be human aggression. I absolutely, wholeheartedly, unfortunately, support your recommendation for humane euthanasia.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have the amendment before us now, so all in favor of the amendment to the original motion to provide an alternative for a, for the owner to find a no-kill shelter, please say aye.
Aye.
Actually, I'm gonna do roll call. Alan?
No.
Patrick?
No.
Judy?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Uh, me, no. Back to the main motion from Selectman Tropiano, is there any further discussion on that?
It has been seconded.
I've been a dog owner for a long, long time, I don't have any dogs right now. I can't say what I really want to feel, because I'd be in trouble with Doreen in about five seconds flat. She already knows what I would say, that's why she's laughing. It's not a funny situation, though. I have a very hard time when people basically have animals and are unable to take care of them properly. Dogs, when they first start off, are not aggressive, even though some dogs might have a tendency, it's usually their environment, the people who take care of them. It is a shame that we allow people to have animals and don't control them at the expense of human beings and other people. I have a whole different thought process of what we should do, unfortunately, we can't.
Thank you. Patrick?
So, it's, it's, you know, I made the motion, but it's a very sad thing to have to make, because dogs often take the abuse of their owners. Their owners lack, have lack of respect for their dogs and how to handle their dogs, and typically, the dogs end up paying the price. And it's very sad, but I also feel really bad for that woman over there who had her dog ripped out of her arms.
I understand that. You can talk to the audience, please, or the chair, and not me?
Hello?
Okay?
What?
No, 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 just, just address the board, Patrick.
Yes.
I am, I am addressing the board.
Okay, alright.
I am addressing the board, I'm just talking about the young woman over there that, that had the thing ripped out of her arms, which makes me also feel terrible, and makes me want to cry when I watch the woman-
I think Jim was agreeing with you.
-say what she says, it really hurts me.
Talking to me or the board?
Huh? What?
You talking to me?
No, no.
No, I'm talking to the board.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with you as an individual, this has to do with how I feel about the circumstances. And I feel really awful for, for both sides of this thing, there's no winners here at all. This woman is gonna be, you know, tormented by this probably for some time, and this young lady is gonna be tormented by her dogs being euthanized. So no winners coming out of this at all. It's all sadness, that's all I can say.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else to be said on the motion before us for euthanasia? I'll do a roll call. Alan?
Sadly, yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Judy?
Jim?
Yes.
Uh, me, yes. We will be sending you a letter that will give you 14 days to get this done. You do have the right of appeal to the Wareham District Court. We're not your attorneys, so you would need to find out about that process yourself, but I do feel an obligation to let you know you have that right. If you choose to exercise that right, as an attorney, I will tell you to do it sooner rather than later, because time flies. And regrettably, this is a very difficult situation, but I think we have to act in the public interest here, and I think that's what we've done tonight. Thank you, everybody, these are not fun.
No, that's so sad. Thank you.
Want to close the hearing?
Thank you to everyone.
We already do. Patrick.
We always close before we deliver. Okay, I'll wait for people, please.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
I have a question for you, people. I've been living now here for over six years, and I owned a car for 20 years. Why you don't fix the street? What's wrong with the street?
We can't, we can't, we can't deal with that right now.
I'm gonna work, I'm gonna pay too if I have to.
I'll, I'll give you the quick answer. You've got a bad sewer system underground there that's 50 years old and falling apart, so you're gonna have to wait until that gets replaced, because we're not gonna pave the street to rip it up in, in a few years.
And this has to-
So, there you go.
Thank you.
At least you're gonna make somebody happy tonight.
Thank you.
Good night, bye-bye.
Night, you all.
Thank you.
Uh, getting back to, oh, we never did board comments, did we?
No.
No.
You skipped them.
Right. Uh, Alan?
Uh, let's see. I have a serpent commission meeting tomorrow, but just to inform the board that the Cannabis Control Commission I mentioned before is coming and doing a presentation of the serpent monthly meeting tomorrow night, and I will be chairing as usual. They will be discussing the current situation, procedures, any new rules, also any new programs such as delivery, et cetera, they'll be coming down.
Alan, can I just stop you one second? For some reason or another, we're not on TV anymore.
Right.
Does that mean this is not being recorded? Can somebody tell me?
No, it's-
If it's not on TV, it's not being recorded.
It is being recorded, it's not, there's no, there's no video.
Okay.
Video died?
We are being recorded, but the TV audience cannot see it.
But that's a good question, because how are we gonna do the minutes?
Exactly, that's my point, and it just, uh-
Otherwise, Judy, you better start writing furiously.
Somebody said it went dead, so, just so you know.
Good luck.
That's the truth.
I know.
Okay, let's continue.
You know, there's actually some people that watch us, right away, they're texting in.
Oh, I know.
They're texting, like, where are you?
Who would believe it?
Yep, let, alright, enough, let Alan go.
Let's go here.
Come on.
The other piece is that we will be also asking the status of anybody who is waiting for a license or a permit as far as growing, manufacturing, retail, medical, delivery, and labs. So, hopefully, next week when I'm back here, I should have some better answers to what's going on since I believe we have nine or 10 businesses that are still waiting.
Very nice.
Uh, the other piece I'd like to mention is we had a program called Streetscape. Uh, I brought it to the town probably about three and a half weeks ago. This came through the Mass DOT. Unfortunately, there's about a 10-day window which will fly. I have to congratulate Ken Buckland and his staff because he was able to get this done, and we got a $40,000 grant. Yesterday, I got a call from Alani, who is a selectman, actually the chair at Middleborough, asking if I had heard anything about the grants because she hadn't got one yet. And I said, "Jeez, we got ours, you know, four or five days ago." And I told her what it was, and I said, "You should call Mass DOT." And that, within a half hour, she actually got her notice in the mail. They didn't get it at all. And it was strictly because the presentation given didn't specify downtown as being the main emphasis, what they were doing. It didn't link it properly. So, again, we have to thank Mr. Buckland for doing exactly what was required to get that grant because that grant did automatically go to everybody. So, we're very fortunate to get that, and I want to make sure people understand that. That's it for right now.
Thank you. Patrick?
No, I'm all set.
Judy?
All set, thank you.
Jim?
No, we're good. Let's move it along.
Yep. Okay, appointments, reappointments, and interviews. For Charter Review Group, Judith Whiteside. Uh, this is back before us because last week we had a motion to not appoint that resulted in a 2-2 tie, so we actually didn't take any direct action on it. So, we've got five people here now, and I'm assuming we can break the deadlock.
Appoint or order on that? When, when you have a tie, um-
We usually come back and vote on it again.
When you have, when you have a tie, the minority loses. And you were in the minority at that point in time.
It was a 2-2 vote, there was no minority.
It was presented as a negative motion.
And the affirmative- The motion failed.
So, the affirmative votes were Alan, Selectman Slaven, and myself.
Right.
And the negative votes were yourself and Mrs. Whiteside.
Right, so the motion failed.
Now, before we can reconsider, do you want to reconsider? You could make a motion to reconsider.
No.
Get a majority.
A motion to reconsider would have been necessary if the vote had been on a motion to appoint, and it ended tied. Because then the motion to appoint would have failed.
Or even if you had passed the motion, a 2-2 tie means it's status quo.
Means you lose.
So, whatever was in place at the time remains in place.
No, had, had the motion been to appoint, and we wanted to continue with this, I would have had first a vote to rescind the prior vote or a vote to reconsider. There would have been one of those two before the main vote on the application again.
Well, through you to the town attorney for clarification?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. A motion that ends with a tie vote is considered to have failed.
Correct.
Upon failure of that motion, the floor is open to any other motion that the board wishes to entertain that pertains to the subject matter.
Correct.
So, it failed? Okay.
A tie? Ties have failed. Sorry.
So, nothing happened?
Do we, I guess we need that. Yeah. A tie vote is, on a motion, always means that the motion failed.
Correct.
But it's open to, to any motion anybody wants to make. And he's bringing it back in front of us, and now we can make another motion and hopefully get a vote one way or the other, either negative vote or a positive vote.
Rich, just make it very simple. Is this not considered, under Robb's rules, which we operate, a reconsideration? And we have to follow Robb's rules, say for reconsideration?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, well, here's a lawyer's answer for you. It depends. If the motion were to, uh, if I made a motion, I move to not appoint Selectman Whiteside, and I perhaps got the, the last motion a little bit wrong. But if it was substantially the same as the, the motion that was made at the last meeting, that would be a reconsideration. However, that motion failed. And unless the motion that's being made is to not appoint Ms. Whiteside, it's not a reconsideration. The failure of the previous motion leaves the floor open to any other motion that does not require a reconsideration. And I can only think of one motion that that, well, there could be two motions. One would be, I move to appoint Ms. Whiteside, or I move to appoint insert name. So, those motions are available without a reconsideration. The only reconsideration motion that would be required would be if there was a specific motion to not appoint Selectman Whiteside, since I believe that was the motion made at the previous meeting.
Well?
I'll just express my extreme disappointment that this was put on the agenda again. It was very clear what was going on, and it's very clear what's happening again. And I'm very disappointed in this board.
So, I make a motion, we appoint Judith Whiteside to the Charter Review Committee. And by the way, just so you know, the reason why I'm making that motion is because I got, just about everybody on that committee sent me something this weekend, and actually, one today, requesting that she rejoin the committee.
I believe, uh, there were four individuals who reached out to the board expressing their support for her appointment, out of the six whom we appointed the previous week. So, that's on record. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion before us from-
Patrick.
Is there a question, Alan?
One on the record, that it was stated when someone else applied for the Charter Review Committee back this last time, that our current chair made a statement that anybody who's an elected official should not be on this board, even though they went ahead and did it. Now, we're going ahead and doing the exact opposite again. Therefore, I have a real problem, and I have a lack of confidence in the chair. Put that on the record, please.
Well, there's a couple of, isn't, um, isn't there another guy on the board that's saying-
There are actually two-
Two people.
Two elected officials-
That are elected officials?
Who were reappointed last week. It's not reappointed. This is an ad hoc group. This is not a committee.
Yeah.
It is the same overall thing. It's just a game going on with politics. I'm very disgusted.
Well, it's a political. Uh, we have a motion from Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, um, I would just like to say that I did bring this up, I believe, before Mrs. Whiteside joined the board and was reelected and joined the board. I said, "Well, we could have, if it's going to be ad hoc, we could have a selectman on the board." And, um, the selectman here said, "No, we don't want a selectman on the board. We don't, we'd rather have them working independently." And, um-
I, I never said that. That never came out of my mouth.
I'm pretty sure it did.
Oh, no, it didn't. So, go back and listen to the tapes if you like, but that never came out of my mouth ever.
I will. So, anyhow, I, you know, in addition, in addition-
I don't want to have somebody put words in my mouth.
All right, okay.
Excuse me. I, I had applied for this, to be on the Charter Review Committee, um, in 2019 before I was elected. Never got a call, never got, uh, an interview. And I was told that, well, we didn't because Selectman can't be on the Charter Review Committee. So, here we are, another year later. Same circumstance, different people, and now it's okay. Nothing against Mrs. Whiteside. She's a bright, articulate individual. It's just a process in how we're carrying things about. Thank you.
Okay, anything further on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Opposed. I'm, I'm gonna just, uh, say I'm present.
Okay. We'll call that an abstention?
Just present.
No, he can, he can, he can vote present.
Present.
Absolutely.
That's fine. Uh, the vote-
It's not all right in the world to do that.
Okay, the motion carries three in favor, one opposed, and one present. Thank you. Uh, next up, licenses and permits. Clerk Whiteside, have you made sense of the secondhand dealers?
Yes, sir. I worked very closely with, um, Ms. Slaney in the office because when I originally reviewed these applications, there were lots of, "Oh, Judy caught a typo," or, you know, different names and that kind of thing.
What were you doing? Alan?
There were, there were errors in, there were inconsistencies in the applicant papers. Those have been corrected. So, um, we have, you want me to make a motion? Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we have GameStop Inc., uh, and it should on the agenda and on the motion is going to read GameStop Inc., number 3814, uh, to be granted a blah, secondhand dealer license. I should say the address, 2421 Cranberry Highway, Suite 4112, Wareham, Mass. A secondhand dealer license to run from the May 1st through the date. No articles are to be stored, displayed, or offered outside the described licensed premises or on a sidewalk or public way unless the license so expressly provides, and it does not. All of the paperwork is in order now.
Okay, thank you.
I made a motion.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, a motion to approve the licenses by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 500.
The next one is Gold World Inc., and the, um, paperwork is all in order. So, I move that the board grant a secondhand dealer license from May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021, Gold World Inc., 3112 Cranberry Highway, C and East Wareham, Mass. 02538. No articles are to be stored, displayed, or offered outside the described licensed premises or on a sidewalk or a public way unless the license expressly so provides, and it does not.
Second.
Okay, motion by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 500.
The next-
Cranberry Flea Market?
Yep, Cranberry Flea Market. The motion is going to read Omega Reign, R-E-I-G-N, Inc., DBA Cranberry Flea Market. There was, um, several inconsistencies in the documentation, so I will make the motion that the board grant a secondhand dealer license from May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021, to Omega Reign Inc., DBA Cranberry Flea Market, 3065 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham. No articles are to be stored, displayed, or offered outside the described licensed premises or on a sidewalk or public way unless the license expressly so provides, and it does not.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Motion by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 500.
The next one is, huh, South Coast Sports Partners. Again, the paperwork on this needed to be corrected, and, um, office staff has managed to do that. Second, I move that the board grant a secondhand dealer license from May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021, to South Coast Sport Partners, 2 Tyler Avenue, East Wareham, Mass. Understanding that no articles are to be stored, displayed, or offered outside the described licensed premises or on a sidewalk or public way unless the license expressly so provides, and it does not.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
I thought I seconded, but that's okay.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Did you jump in there, Jim? I didn't-
Yeah, he beat you to it, so I'm going to give the second to, to Jim on that one.
That's fine.
Um, that one-
500.
He's welcome to the-
Okay, I'm not sending that one around because there's a misspelling on one of the selectmen's names. So, I will circulate the others.
It's mine, I'm used to it.
Now, it's mine.
There's no way that she won't catch that, boy.
Next, um, is an application from Gourmet Garden of Wareham, Inc., DBA Ginger, for a alcoholic beverage license.
Outdoor seating.
Temporary outdoor seating, all alcohol license, to be consumed on the premises to Gourmet Garden of Wareham, Inc., DBA Ginger, 2421 Cranberry Highway, Suite 420, Wareham, Mass. Manager is Fen Liu.
Second.
Okay, motion to authorize the outdoor seating alcohol license by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor, say aye.
Question for you. Should we, in the motion, should we read into the record what the premises is? Yes?
Sam?
You can say as presented.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's generally understood that it is as applied for in the application. If, if you're not certain about, um, that, you certainly could add those words, as applied for, or in as described in the application.
The individual provided documentation that he had permission to use that area.
Sure.
The only thing that I'd like to request is that we make sure that a copy gets to them of the regulations that we got today from ABCC.
Well, that's a good point.
Because that's a difficult thing to do, to package what they want packaged. And I think we ought to make sure that they get out to all of our, our licensees immediately.
The, uh, the person from the ABCC who sent it along requested that we notify everybody who's doing this.
Okay.
So, it's going to go out to all the license holders.
So, we should send it with their approval as well?
Yep.
Was there a second to that motion?
So, we're discussing it, aren't we?
Yeah, go ahead.
Who seconded it?
Hmm?
She made a motion. Did one of you second it?
Oh.
Or do we start talking in the meantime?
Jim seconded. Did you second, Jim?
No.
He didn't second that one.
I'll second.
Okay, now we can talk. Alan? I'll let Alan go first. He was waving his hand.
On the application, is there a drawing or a layout of the actual area? I know where it's going to be, but you don't have, they don't have an area broken out.
It's drawn, yeah.
And they have a picture-
The restaurant next door to them does.
They have a picture.
And is this going to be controlled with entrance and exit out?
Looks like it's roped off and stuff. Let me see the picture. Why don't you give it to Alan so we can take a look? You want to look at it, Alan?
Yeah, because right ne, right next door, there is a restaurant that has a little patio.
Yeah.
And they can control that. This one-
There's actually a picture.
This one has nothing.
Yeah. There's a drawing, and then there's a picture, colored picture there that's pretty good.
Yep.
It's up on the sidewalk away from the street, so.
Yeah, it's on the outside piece. Okay, it only shows one place, so it's going to be coming from the actual business in there. Thanks. Okay? That's all I need to see.
It's all set.
So, all right, um, has the Board of Health approved the seating arrangement as presented? And, and do we have a copy of the letter from the owner of the property giving permission from the utilized, the outdoor space which they're describing?
I do not have a copy of that letter, sir.
I think the Board of Health has to inspect it before they can physically open it. They don't have to sometimes go there beforehand, but before they can actually open that facility under the rules that the governor put out for this outside area, the Board of Health has to go and inspect and sign off before they can use it.
Right.
I, I just asked if they had. It looks like it's already set up in the picture.
Yeah, I doubt very much any of these businesses ahead of time.
I'm not against it. I'm just trying to-
Well, would we-
Ensure that things are done in a proper order. And, um, it is our responsibility to see some of this paperwork up front. You know, especially the permission to utilize the property by the owner, which, which I'm sure it is, but it, it should be in writing. An insurance rider, um, they say it's been approved and it's okay. And is it, is it indicated in the documentation?
I think Jim is actually making a point because the area we're talking about is not leased by the restaurant. It is part of the mall company that owns the sidewalks, et cetera. So, there really technically, uh, actually should be something from the mall owner of the property that's allowing them to use that area, and there's an insurance behind the covering it. I believe Jim is really correct on that.
Well, they've been using it for food, but not for drinks. So, they meant, and that would have been approved by the Board of Health. But, uh, Jim's right. That should be in the file.
Well, do we want to, do we want to set this aside, or do we want to draw the motions and approve it conditionally?
Make sure it gets to the file, that everything gets in it before they release it.
Yeah.
Yeah, condition it, that's fine with me, just-
I mean, you know what I mean? It should be in the file. The Board of Health, Jim's absolutely right. If the Board of Health went out there and did it, and they did because they did it for their food, then they should be able to put that in the file.
Yeah. And as I said, the problem is that that piece of property they're gonna use to do it is not theirs to do on their own.
So we, yeah, we would want a letter from the property owner.
Just something that protects the public and ourselves, to make sure-
I agree with that, too.
Yeah, and it protects them as well.
Yeah, I mean, with El Morachi and stuff, you know, next door, we opened up that hallway, it's the same thing.
Yep.
We had to give them permission to use the property and have insurance to cover it.
Okay, so the motion, so the motion is to approve and hold until we get those two pieces?
Yes, the Board of Health sign off and the letter from the property, the actual property owner.
I think that's perfectly reasonable requests.
Yeah, it is.
I also will just read into the record that this license is granted pursuant to the governor's order and is effective only through November 1st, 2020, or until the order is rescinded, whichever is sooner, and will revert to the original licensed premises on that date.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion to approve pending receipt of two things, and we have a second. I think for Patrick, was it?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, 5-0-0. So we'll approve and hold that, please. Let's see, COVID-19 update. We sort of had it there in citizen comments, but is there anything the assistant town administrator would like to tell us?
No, I think we covered everything.
Are there any questions about it from the board?
Nope.
Alan.
Just to update from Mass Municipal Association and the state government, from the Lieutenant Governor's Office, we're on phase three, step two. Step three is two to three weeks away unless something goes south on us.
Fingers crossed.
Let's see.
Patrick, any COVID questions?
No, I think, I think, I think anybody, we should be proud of our people, though. I think we're doing a pretty good job right now. And I think we should be proud of everybody. For those people who, and I'm talking to those people between like 20 and 40, who seem to think they're invincible, I just want them to look again and remember that it's not you that we're trying to protect, it's the person you run into that we're trying to protect. Some old guy, or some, somebody you give it to that might be young, when they go home, they give it to the older person, and then we have an issue. So let's continue to do what we're doing, and let's even go a little further. And everybody, please, wear your masks.
Thank you. Clerk Whiteside?
No, thank you.
Clerk Moniz?
No, I just, it was nice that Mr. Lester came in earlier. And as I had said, that we had had discussion, I had asked that we discuss that particular issue about the use of the courts. And I spoke earlier today with Ms. Allen England, and she was going to address it anyhow, and she was gonna bring it up during this portion, so I appreciate that. And I just want people to know that, you know, we're aware and we didn't have our heads in the sand on this. And, you know, we hear you, and it's just, sometimes it's a difficult decisions that have to be made. Even though it's beyond our control, we support the decision that was made until it can be done differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have anything. Next up-
Rich has something.
Attorney Ballen would like to speak.
I just wanted to say to the board that the town administrator, who was on furlough this week, sends his best wishes to you right now.
Well, thank him for us.
Is he eating canned beans all week long because he's not getting paid?
He's eating cans of beans.
I could see him doing that. Canaryous, I think is the word. Let's see, refuge discussion. I put this on because this is gonna stay on weekly.
Yeah.
I'll turn it over to Jim weekly because he's our point guy on this at this point. So if he has anything to update us, this is his time to tell us about it.
We're supposed to be putting out the RFP. I don't know if it hit the paper yet. There was a draft, or actually, I think the actual written format had been sent to Mr. Sullivan last week. Maybe Ms. Allen England knows anything further on that?
I'm sorry, I don't, Jim.
No, that's okay. I just, we're working on it. And we have other, not just the curbside collection portion, but also we're still talking about possibly a transfer station or convenience center. How many trailer, how many mobile homes do we have? About 1,400?
1,100.
1,100?
I think it's 11, yeah.
And I don't know if they provided recycling. So I think our recycling facilities, they've talked about opening up again, and that was a big user of them. They were supposed to be putting together a plan for the reopening. Town Administrator Sullivan had requested him to do that. He had spoken with me, and it makes sense, you know, how are we gonna do it? How are we gonna move forward in this? They provide a good service. And when I was speaking with Todd Gilpe, he's the district coordinator for landfills, I mean, not landfills, but transfer stations in this area, he spoke very highly of their, our recycling coordinator, and the great job she did about submitting the paperwork necessary for the small grants and whatnot. So, you know, big applaud to them and what they do, and we'll get through it. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. And again, this is gonna be a weekly item. Okay, we took care of the vote to authorize the town administrator to apply for improvements to him and playground. Just once again, for the record, this relates to installing, I won't call it a fitness center because it's not enclosed, but a fitness area with various things for people to use for adults. So it's gonna be a playground for adults. Imagine that. If CPC accepts the application and if town meeting votes for it. Discussion and vote to raise fine for parking at town-owned beach lots without a beach sticker from $30 to $100. I put this on because-
It's a good one.
There are, well, you guys already motioned a second?
We're ready to.
You know what, I'm ready to, because, you know, frankly, 30 bucks to park all day is a dream come true.
It's a joke.
Yeah.
You know, 30 days, $30 to go to the beach?
I mean, if it weren't for the fact that I can get a sticker for 15 bucks, I'd go eat the 30 bucks.
Exactly, that's the point.
You know, I mean, why not? What is it costing down the Cape now? I know 10 years ago, if you parked at like Seagull Beach in, what is it, Dennis, I forget which town, it was 20 bucks. And I imagine they've gotta be up to 30 bucks now, so that's a wash if you come to one of our beaches. Our residents only.
What's the-
Oh, a ticket, whoop-de-doo.
And it doesn't hurt our residents because they can go for free. They get their little sticker and they're ready to go.
Yeah, for 15 bucks.
15 bucks for the, any beach they want.
What's the maximum rate for our pay for parking for a day?
Well, we charge, what, $2 an hour at the kiosk?
For the maximum of what?
Oh, I don't know if there is, is there a maximum?
For 10 hours?
No.
I think it's just-
I think it's 10 hours.
From the time they go on to the time they close. And I think they do, do they shut down around 8 o'clock?
Yeah, something like that. Because if you go out to dinner, unless you go out late, you gotta, you gotta pay, you're gonna get a ticket.
No, it closes at a certain time.
It does.
Yeah, but I think it's like 8 o'clock.
I think it's 10 hours.
Jim's right, there's definitely a shut off.
Yeah.
Oh, you could have corrected that. It's all right.
She doesn't want him, she doesn't want him misspelling hung up.
Someone can text Derek, we'd know in a minute.
So anyhow, that's what I wanna know. You know, I can see going up. I don't know about $100. Again, we get $2 an hour. If it's a 10-hour, it'd be 20 bucks that we charge to park at the kiosks. I could be wrong. Does anybody know?
Well, but this is only for the fine if you park illegally. That's all-
I know, and that's only on, right. So $50 is, I mean, $100, big.
$100 sends a message, don't do this.
And if they don't wanna pay it, how many people are gonna go try to get it overturned?
Yeah, that's, there is that, but, you know, that's up to the clerk magistrate.
Correct.
Actually, it's not. We don't-
Well, actually, you go to the parking clerk first and then the clerk magistrate, but-
I just, you know.
We've accepted that portion of the law.
I find it a little bit steep, but that's just my opinion.
A little what?
Steep, a little bit. We've gone from, what'd you say, 30 to 100?
Yep.
Um, you know, it is what it is. I'm just, yeah. As long as we can collect it. I didn't sign on.
I make a motion that we approve the $100 fine for parking illegally at town-owned beaches.
Second.
Okay, motion by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Clerk Whiteside. Selectman Slaven?
I think Alan has something.
Yeah. Town-owned beaches, we're talking about Shell Point, Swift Beach, and Little Harbor, correct?
Yes, these are just, these are just the lots where resident stickers are required.
Swift's Neck, sorry, dear.
Yeah, that's right.
Actually, I should, I should say yes, dear.
You said yes, dear?
Yeah, that's what I should say. Might as well be correct.
You're in for a penny, you're in for a pound.
I'm already in for 10 pounds. What's the difference?
You've been in for a lot.
For life.
The only issue we're gonna, we're gonna have, no matter what we charge, is that people come down, visit family, et cetera, to those areas, and they don't have any other stickers except the one house. And if you have a couple people, like four or five people, cars today, most of them are four-passenger, sometimes five. So a second car comes down, and you're gonna have feedback, no matter what the dollar amount is, is, you know, I have family lives here, and I can't come visit my family, and I have to get a sticker.
Temporary stickers are available, so.
Yeah, they're available, I'm just saying, just so they understand. We're gonna have a lot of kickback.
I have a suggestion, and I, I think that if there's a notice that goes out on the tax bills about how you can apply for your beach sticker by mail, that that would help people understand that they can get those stickers starting January 2nd. And if you give people the opportunity to buy the stickers right off the bat, even if they're still in South Carolina or wherever they're coming from, then I think we, we avoid some of the issues that have been brought to our attention. And not that I want to see COVID continue, but I think, I think doing it by mail is a much easier way for many residents. And they were reminded that if-
You know, once upon a time, the sticker used to come with your property tax bill. You got the sticker for free from the town. And you got your dump sticker, too. So that was back in the good old days when the town actually had money and we didn't have to charge people fees for all this stuff.
Once upon a time, gas was 26 cents a gallon.
Actually, 19 cents.
Can I ask a question? When would this-
Once upon a time, this board was young.
When will this, when will this action take effect?
This has to be published in a newspaper. Under state law, you've gotta have your parking fines published in a newspaper, so we gotta do that. And the other thing is, in order to comply with the Massachusetts Uniform Citation Law, they're gonna need new ticket books. But they obviously weren't gonna order the ticket books until we voted for this because they didn't know what we were gonna do.
And you have to change all the-
It's gonna be a little while before the big, before the big ticket show.
So you have to change all the signage to stating what the fines are?
Yep.
And the amount of the fines.
Yeah, there's some steps to take.
So it's, I mean, this probably won't go into effect till next year, or, I mean-
This is gonna be the endless summer, I think. It's not as heck out, nobody's working, and the beaches are gonna be great until October.
So what's the date? Do we have a date?
No.
Take effect when we get everything in place? I don't know.
When everything's in place. Probably won't take place until the end of August at the earliest.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be a month, I bet. You don't have to set a date, we just follow the process, and then, our vote is our vote, so we're good with that. It's just a question when, when the people can execute.
Through you?
The key legal trigger is gonna be the, well, the vote when it happens, but the publication of the newspaper, that's the operative legal date, and then the rest is just administrative.
Yep.
I mean, obviously, if you're still handing out tickets that say $30 on them, it's a $30 ticket, it's not a $100 ticket. You can't, you know, that's only a hundred or-
I actually offered to go through the ticket books and do that, and Walchek laughed at me.
Yeah, but you're going from 30 down to 10. That doesn't work.
Yep. So I'll certainly ask to be notified by the enforcement authorities when they're doing this so that we know what's happening.
I think-
What's that?
Shell Point has its own restrictions for parking. Is this on top of it?
Yeah.
This is a fine, this is-
This is a fine.
You already have a fine for not having your kiosk at Shell Point.
It's not a kiosk, Shell Point is for stickers.
No, it's both, it's kiosk and stickers.
No, we're only dealing with stickers.
We're not dealing with the parking areas that have parking, parking kiosks.
So just be Swift's Neck and Little Harbor, then? Because Shell Point has kiosks this from. I look at the kiosk, I go check and-
I think the question is whether or not if you have a beach sticker as a resident, you also can park at Shell Point then without having a, the kiosk. So that's why I think this one, I think this one here moves both ways.
Okay, so I think Shell Point's one of them, that is covered by the beach sticker. I'm positive, in fact.
It's covered, but I think what Jim is saying is that there's an alternative method to pay, so we don't wanna ticket people who are going to the kiosk.
Or-
If they're allowed.
It has to be the same, I would assume that it would have to be the same fine as the other areas, which would be the pier and all kiosk fines, you know, anything related to that.
We could name the three areas, and then that would take care of it, because then we could say, yeah, Shell Point's $100 no matter what. If you're, if you're caught in there parking illegally, it's part of the beach thing and you gotta pay, whether you use the kiosk or not. Know what I'm saying?
No, that's, that's fine with me.
Just name those three places in the, in the, in the thing. I mean, we could add them to the motion if you want.
Tell counsel.
Does that sound all right?
Through you? See what we got.
Well, Mr. Chairman, through you, this is not a legal question, it's an administrative question. And perhaps it's worth waiting till Mr. Sullivan comes back from his furlough.
Yeah, see what he wants to do. Yeah, that's not a bad idea. And we can fix it if he wants us to do something.
Give the approval of the motion, and then we'll come back and adjust if we need to.
Yeah, let Derek figure it out.
If we need to adjust the motion, we'll put it back on.
Yeah, that's all.
That's all.
That's fine.
We won't publish just yet.
So we'll wait till-
Mr. Sullivan returns.
Comes back and gives us some input, and then we'll make a decision based upon that and our-
Well, if we need to reconsider, we will. If, if, if we don't, then I guess the motion's, I mean, then we'd have to do a reconsideration and everything else. So let's see what he says.
How about if we phrase it that the fines go up for the properties designated by the town administrator? For the appropriate properties designated by the town administrator, because he is in fact in charge of all of the properties.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman.
I just tabled the matter.
Thank you. I agree until he comes back and we have some discussion.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, it's, it's up to Derek, and he can figure it out. If he needs, if we need to change it, we'll come back and we'll change it.
Motion to table to a definite time?
Next week.
Motion to table to next week?
That's fine. Somebody wanna second it?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table till next week from Jim, seconded by Alan. All in favor say aye.
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 Abstain, 5-0-0 will be on next week's agenda. Okay.
We now have some donations made to the Wareham Free Library. The first one is for $50 from Shirley Jones, DBA, the Wareham Busy Bee Quilters Guild.
Second.
Okay, motion to accept the generous gift from Shirley Jones by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0.
Accept the donation to the Wareham Free Library for $500 from the Friends of the Wareham Free Library.
Second.
Okay, motion to accept the generous donation from the Friends of the Wareham Free Library for $500 by Clerk Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain.
Accept donation, accept donation to the Wareham Free Library for $6,000 from the Friends of the Wareham Free Library.
Second.
I'd like to thank them also for the work they do.
Okay, motion by Clerk Whiteside to accept the extremely generous donation of $6,000 from the Friends of the Wareham Free Library, seconded by Selectman Slaven.
Just a quick question. Are we sure it's the Friends and not the Library Foundation? There's two different groups. Do we have a possible error? Not only the big donations come from the-
The letters, they must be there.
From the Library Foundation.
Letters are there for him to sign, so.
Yeah, the letters are-
I'm just asking, because it's unusual.
Yeah, they both say, they both say Friends.
Okay, fine, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, if it's incorrect, we'll come back next week and fix it.
Yeah, it's just not usually that way.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, 5-0-0.
It is the Friends.
Yep.
Just was told.
Do we wanna plow through liaisons tonight, or do you wanna do it next week? What's your pleasure?
It's kinda late. Can we do that next week? Does anybody mind?
Isn't it gonna take 10 minutes?
It's, for me, as far as I'm concerned, I'll just stay where I'm at, I have no problems.
Well, I guess, I guess it comes down to, does anybody want any changes? And is Clerk Whiteside willing to take on the open ones that are sitting there now?
That would be what Ms.-
So-
Do you want to-
What Mary Mackey did.
What say you?
I wanted to know what you were interested in, and-
Can we just take two minutes and go over them? No? 10?
All right, go ahead.
You say two minutes.
The Affordable Housing Trust is, Jim is a member, so we don't need-
That's correct.
Okay. The assessors, the delegate is Jim, and that's fine with everybody.
Yeah.
The audit committee is Alan. Beach and Tourism Committee is-
Audit Committee is almost, we're not disbanded, but we have no members to speak of.
Yeah, right.
We have to get that back up and running.[1788.16]
Okay. Um, the Beach and Tourism Committee?
Hold on one second. Uh, you, you wanna keep the audit committee going? Because I think, I thought you had said previously that substantially you thought the work was done, but that's...
Well, the work was done as far as initially, but the work's supposed to be done every, every year to look at what's going on with the audit, et cetera.
Okay.
And to make a recommendation to change firm if possible. The problem is, under Mass General law, they prefer you to have an audit committee. It has an effect on how the town is rated, et cetera, as well.
Oh, okay.
It's just the problem is the Chair, Bill Heaney, is permanently in Florida. Jeff Swett is gone, cause that was from the School Committee, et cetera. Larry McDonald was on there. Larry is no longer a resident of the town of Wareham. So we have to reach out to get people to come back on.
Is that three on that board?
Five.
Five. Well, so we need, okay.
So right now, there's no quorum.
Yeah, all right. Start recruiting folks. Okay, continue, please.
Yeah, Beach and Tourism Title Bomb?
Uh, that committee has not met for a while. Um, it seems that many of the tasks that that committee was doing, uh, have been sort of taken over by the Redevelopment Authority and the Planning Office. So I may be coming back, uh, I'll poll the people who are on it and see if they, they are still interested, and if not, I may come back with a vote for the board to dissolve it, because that was a committee created by the board.
Okay.
What, what was that one?
Beach and Tourism?
Yeah. You haven't met, right?
We haven't met for, it's gotta be a couple of years.
Capital Planning is, uh, Alan.
Yeah.
The, the Trash Man.
That's an appointment.
It's you.
Three years.
That's you. Um, Cemetery is Alan.
Yep.
The Community Events, Alan is a member, so we really don't need a liaison.
No, Scotch that.
Yep.
Nothing available that way.
Um, Community Preservation was Mary. Fine. That means, fine means me.
Yeah, we know.
Conservation would, was Mary, and I guess that means me. Uh, Council on Aging, well, seeing as how I'm one of the oldest ones here, one of the oldest ones here, I guess that's me.
I've been, I've been actually doing that, but if Judy wants it, it's fine. I've been working on a separate program for work.
Oh, do you wanna do it then?
Well, I'm working on a program to make Wareham age-friendly community.
Okay, yeah, no, all right, then this...
No, that makes sense, just keep it then.
Might as well continue with it.
Excellent. Finance Committee, Alan and Patrick?
Yep.
Yeah. It's fine.
Okay.
Actually, it should be Alan and Peter. Not only the Chair is supposed to be there as well.
Yeah, that's fine too.
Patrick was there because he was Chair. The Chair is always supposed, not by procedure, but the way it's set up, the, the Chair is also supposed to be on the...
It's up to you.
The liaison for the Finance Committee, plus one other member.
Okay, so it's Alan and Peter.
Yeah, I, I reserve the right to designate Patrick.
Whatever you wanna do.
Board of Health is me, Historical Commission is Alan, Historic District Commission is Alan, Joint Transportation Planning Group is, the delegate is Alan, and the Alternative is Patrick.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Library Board of Trustees, Peter.
Yeah.
Mine at Forest Committee, Peter.
Yeah.
Open Space, I guess that's me. Planning Board is Jim, Plymouth County Commissioners Advisory Board, Alan. Recycling Committee is my Trash Man.
Yes.
Um, the Road Commissioners is, um, Patrick.
Mm-huh.
Okay. School Committee, Patrick, and I'll go on there.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
No, that's good, I'd like to have a second one in there.
Sewer Commissioners is Patrick. Southeastern Massachusetts Commuter Rail Task Force is Alan. Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, otherwise known as Serpent, is Alan because he is the Commissioner. Wareham Cultural Council, um, was Mary.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that the one that only meets like once a year or something?
Something like that.
I guess that's me. Um, Wareham Redevelopment, we already know, I got bagged on that one.
Did that already.
Wareham Veterans Council is Alan.
Yep.
Yep, okay. And the ZBA is Alan.
Yep.
Anybody wanna jump in and...
Yeah, we missed, we missed two.
What?
Um, I'm on the negotiating team for the Union, the School Department Union, because we're in the midst of negotiations, so I wanna hang on to that one.
Okay, so what is it called?
Is that the Chair? Does the Chair usually do that?
What?
Negotiations or...
No, no, cause Judy had it and she was...
Anybody?
We, we have the right to appoint a sixth member to the School Committee for negotiations.
It's actually, it's any selectman.
And I'm, we're actually in the middle of negotiations now, so...
It doesn't matter because it's any selectman.
Yeah.
Under Mass General law, if you look at it, when it comes to the union negotiations as far as school, we are allowed a seat at the table.
Yeah, and Judy had it and she wasn't Chair when she was here.
That's right.
It never required of you Chair.
So it's okay, but I wanna keep that one because, only because we're in the middle of it right now?
Yeah.
And it's ongoing, so I don't wanna lose the continuity.
What else?
I wouldn't know too much about that anyhow.
I'm sorry.
I wouldn't know a lot about that anyhow.
He doesn't know anything about union negotiations. He's a neophyte.
Do you have another one?
Uh, no, actually, we did the other one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It was the School Committee, but you added you, which is good.
Okay.
So that's cool.
Okay.
I think you had ZBA, did we miss that?
Cause we always had two.
It's you.
The what?
No, it's me. ZBA was it, was this?
She read it.
It's you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you.
We always added two to the School Committee, so it works no good.
No, I just, um, I'm gonna kick this forward again, uh, put it out there again. The Marine Resources Commission was created by town meeting and, uh, it's never been, members have not been reappointed, and I think with the fifty-four miles of shoreline and I don't know how many thousands of acres of bay and bay, embayments, that it would be important to do so. And I would like to shepherd that forward, um, and, and reconstitute that. So I'm just putting that out there. I did it last year and I'm doing it again this year, and I, I think it's something that's important.
I don't think that's a problem at all. If he wants to do it, I think, go for it.
Yeah.
Well...
Yeah, if you can recruit, go ahead.
I've got, I've got some people and, um, then we'll, we'll, we'll put out the requests and, um, committee openings.
Absolutely, go for it.
So people can apply. And I'll, I'll let Judy finish her thing here, but, but thank you.
I just, as a comment for Jim, I used to be on that committee, et cetera, and, uh, I was involved with writing a, uh, as we have in basically New Bedford, we have a seaport authority.